All right, so good afternoon once again. It is 3:35 PM. I do want to be respectful of everyone's time, so we will get started. Again, I'm Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Housing, Urban and衞业 Committee. I'm asking you to recognize the members of the committee who I believe are on this call. So I do see that Vice Chair Schleifer is on the call. Also, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Henry. I believe I did mention the Council. So I believe we're all here. We also have representatives from the mayor's office, also on the law department, E.C., General Services, D.P.W. So again, I won't go through all of the individual names, but again, I do want to thank you all for your time today. We do want to get started. Also, I want to recognize our Richard Crummick staff to the committee. Also, Kayla Young from the Council President's Office provides technical support and assistance today. I also want to recognize Councilman Costello, also Councilman Risinger, although not members to the committee, they are the co-sponsors of the bill that we'll be hearing this afternoon. So again, the bill is 1904-77, and that is solid waste surcharge exemption. I do want to provide an opportunity for either or both Councilman Costello or Councilman Risinger to have a few comments as we get started.
I'm going to defer to Councilman Risinger.
Risinger, again.
Councilman Risinger on?
I don't think he's...
He isn't on yet.
So he's not on yet. So in his seat, Councilman Costello, could you say a few words?
Sure thing, I got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity provided by you to hear this bill. This bill essentially is a modification to existing code that was drafted back in 1991. There was a solid waste surcharge that was set up. That surcharge imposes a fee on individuals who are or organizations that are taking trash to a final resting place within Baltimore City. What we found is that it is essentially incentivizing people to have a final resting place for their trash in the city of Baltimore as opposed to outside of the city of Baltimore, which is the intent of this. So Councilman Risinger, I believe that appropriate amending of existing code to point out that if you are taking your trash to a final resting place, whether that's an incinerator outside of the city or a landfill outside of the city, that you should not be subject to this fee. We obviously want to do everything we can to contribute to our zero-waste plan for the city of Baltimore. So that is the intent behind it. Happy to answer any questions, and certainly would defer to my colleague, when he joins the call.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. And again, we will also hold out for Councilman Risinger as well. Do want to, I'll start from top. Again, I know Matt Stegman from the mayor's office is on the call. Did you have any comments before we go to some of the H.C. reports?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I did send a revised version of the Finance Department's report, and I just wanted to make sure that the committee did receive that. But otherwise, no, we thank you for hearing this bill today.
Okay, thank you so much. And yes, we did. So I know there was communication with both law and finance. So let's start with law. Do you want to have a little testimony in terms of what you submitted and then where we stand for this bill? I think you're on muted.
Sorry. I always hit it, but it didn't go. So Elena DePietra for the Law Department, good to see you all. The Law Department stands by its report. We sent in a revised report with no amendments, and that's the one that we are going with today.
All right, all right. So thank you so much. So now that it moves to be favorable, I did want to hear from any questions from the Law Department. Let me say that first.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
I'm unclear about the position of the Law Department. The Law Department's report that was submitted initially... I'm sorry, maybe I didn't see the revised report and that you did submit it. Is it on Legistar?
Yes, it is.
I'm on Legistar right now.
Councilman was emailed to you this morning.
Okay, I saw an email from Elena saying that she was sent, that they were coming, but I didn't see it.
When I clicked on the Legistar, two of them came up. It looks like it's only one, but it's both of them on Legistar.
Oh, the link says this file no longer exists.
Really? Because I just brought it up a second ago.
I was able to pull it up via the email that was sent before, so take another look if you can, and if not, we can...
Yeah, I guess, since I haven't seen it, what is the position? Because the original report said you could recommend approval with the amendments. You're recommending approval without amendments?
Yes, I am. I went back and looked at it, and it really didn't make a difference, the amendments. They were causing more problems than they were worth because they would complicated the interpretation of some of the other sections. So the bottom line is that the loads that would get taxed one place or another, even without the amendments, the appropriate loads would be taxed, if not at the transfer station at the final disposal site.
Okay, so you're approving for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Other members of the committee or other members of council have questions for law? Okay, well, thank you very much. Finance, I know you sent us a report, but I did want to hear from you. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, right before we get to law.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Risinger, I know it looks like you're back on a call. Would you like to be able to have a few comments before we get started with H.C. reports?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It took a while to get back. I just want, I'll keep it brief. Regards to the purpose of introducing this bill is, as we all know, we all support zero waste, and we do have a residential waste plan that has to do with recycling and composting, but we have no plan for commercial waste. And so if we could ship out this commercial waste out of the city, that means there's less waste sent to Wilbrae and landfill, in the landfill. So that is the purpose of the bill. And, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for holding the hearing, and thank you for giving the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilman Risinger. Always a pleasure, appreciate your input on this one. So again, with that being said, any questions for Councilman Risinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Is that Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Risinger, can you explain the essence of the, I guess, the purpose of the solid waste surcharge in general?
Councilman, I would further defer that to the testimony from the different haulers in the city.
I guess my question is, as a city, as a law, that such a surcharge exists, I assume that the city of Baltimore has this as a law because it's in the interest of the city to have such a law and to have such a surcharge. And I'm trying to get a sense of why such a law exists.
So let me jump in really quickly. So, Councilman Dorsey, I think it's a valid question. I do see that D.P.W. is also on our list. So again, I would also like to give a DPW around, you know, what we gain having such a law and what the impact. But I think it's worth having that question. Thank you. And then if Councilman Risinger has anything else, and not, then we'll go on to finance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so again, I'm sorry for the delay. So Finance Department, I know you have some comments. Please, at this point, tell us about your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pedro Ponte, Representative Finance Department, I hope you get the second version of the response. We stand by the report, we don't oppose to the legislation. Let me give you a quick background. We did a lot of research as well, just to understand, these have relatively old surcharges since 1981. I believe, just to address a little bit the question of Councilman Dorsey, the original intention was to divert commercial solid waste outside the city by imposing the surcharge intention 30 years ago. That become a regular inflow of ash for the city. Now, I think the intention of this legislation is to modify that, you know, that original intention of the law. Want to bring up a few, I guess, important items that we need to bring to your attention in terms of the operational concept that we will have with this legislation. In terms of fiscal impact, we don't think it's going to be a material fiscal impact to cities, only as of now, only one acceptance facility that brings their trash outside the city. So we're seeing about 5% reduce in revenues, but just for clarification, the surcharge is paid by the haulers that dump the solid waste into these facilities. So we have to come up with some type of mechanism, because if the trash, the destination of this solid waste is outside the city, there is no reason for the payment from haulers. But we have to somehow figure out, is it going to be a rebate program, a refund program for those haulers who are paying, even though the final destination of the trash is going to be outside? That's something that I just want to bring up to attention. Other than that, again, we don't oppose to the legislation, and I'm happy to answer any question you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Any members? Okay, it looks like Elena DePietra is going to say something, I see Councilman Dorsey. Elena? I think you're on mute here.
Yeah, it's finicky. I just wanted to say that in my research, what I discovered about the surcharge was the basic purpose of it was to provide funds for any remediation or cleanup that would be necessary due to the depositing of trash in any of the facilities, like the environmental cleanup sort of thing. So that was the original purpose of the surcharge. So it makes sense that if it's going out of the city, that it would not have the same impact as loads that were dropped in a city facility.
Okay, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that there's a history here that relates the fee to environmental concern. And it seems to me that there is perhaps broader environmental concern than the limited scope of where the trash goes. I'm concerned that there is an environmental and infrastructural impact to the city from having this trash just hauled around the city. The mere fact that this business is occurring in the city has an environmental impact to it that I don't think should be overlooked. And I guess that's what I'm concerned with. If I may ask Finance the question, Pedro, you said that you don't oppose the bill, but isn't, am I correct that the Finance Department's written bill report actually does voice opposition? I read it earlier, Finance Department opposed. Am I correct?
We have, that's an older version of our response. We sent an email with our revised response to the bill. We refined, and we have a better understanding of the intention and the fiscal impact. That's why we don't oppose to the bill. So you probably read the old version of the response.
And one other question on fiscal impact. Did the Finance Department take into consideration the fiscal impact that would exist had the fee actually been updated over time to continue to hold its same value considering the inflation? The fee was set when this law was put into place in 1991 at this same rate of $7.50 per ton, adjusted for by the Consumer Price Index, that's $14.29 today. Is the Finance Department considering the fiscal impact of, you know, essentially twice what we are currently generating in revenue? And has the Finance Department considered the impact of potential revenues from an increase to the fee? Should we say, hey, you know what, the cost for environmental impact here is actually greater than it was considered in 1991? Perhaps our perspective on greenhouse gas emissions and the cost of solid waste disposal and transport is, you know, the environmental costs and societal costs, all of that, is actually much greater than we estimated before. Maybe that rate should be actually much higher than what it would be even if it were adjusted for inflation, at which point we would be foregoing even greater revenue to the city.
I, Councilman Dorsey, I agree with you entirely. I think our response, the latest response, has a reflection of probably revising not only the solid waste surcharge, but also the tipping fee and do eventually a broader analysis of what's going on in the surrounding jurisdiction and how much the other jurisdiction are charging for this type of services. This, the specific fiscal impact you tackle, for this legislation only tackles the portion of how much we will be losing by this action. It's not taking consideration environmental issues at this time, but definitely we would like to review our structure and see all the components that relates to solid waste and entire environmental situation for the city and try to come with a better solution that might include the tipping fee as well.
Well, I will say thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for raising those important issues, and thank you Finance for that response. Do you have any further testimony, Pedro, for Finance?
I don't. I stand by that report.
Okay, and then does any other member of the committee have any questions for Finance? Okay, so hearing none. I know we also saw, as far as D.P.W. and D.G.S., they both deferred to law and finance, but do either of those agencies have anything they want to add at this point?
This is Marsha Collins for D.P.W., if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. I think the fact that this surcharge was applied back in 1991, we can only look at what documents we have available. And I would say that from what I had seen, one of the reasons for establishing the surcharge was to create an economic incentive for businesses to choose recycling or other waste diversion measures over disposal options. That was some of the documentation I had seen. And because it was a recognition that we don't control the commercial waste stream, we can only control what we collect curbside and through our programs. So that was what I was seeing in the documents, just to further respond to Councilman Dorsey's concern. The surcharge itself, as we all know, isn't on the facilities themselves, and it was applying it to anything that was really coming into the city. And what this bill will do is clarify that disposal means something very specific that would exempt some of the current operations from paying or starting to pay this surcharge fee. The code right now exempts certain activities, like the Maryland Port Authority for Harbor Cleanups, nonprofits, neighborhood improvement associations, and certain load by certain weights don't have to pay the surcharge. That would remain unchanged. And it is the definition of disposal that's the key to this particular bill, because currently the disposal facilities are defined under the code and would include these, what is considered a transfer facility. It really didn't have to do for, you know, final destination, any hauling in of trash and placing it within a facility currently is considered disposal and therefore subject to the surcharge. So that's the essence of what is being proposed in this legislation. We are hoping through, once we issue our Less Waste, Better Baltimore Plan, that waste diversion is going to be a big part of what we're trying to do, and it's an important thing. We do want to encourage people to do other things other than just dumping a landfill. And so, you know, this may be in correlation with that, but we did defer to law and finance because we wanted to be certain that the definition was compatible with state law about disposal and what facilities are considered disposal facilities, and that, you know, we wanted, obviously, to hear from Finance to see what kind of financial impact it would have. That's a very quick summary of our bill response on this particular legislation, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, and thank you, Marsha. And before we go to Councilman Dorsey, I've seen that Elena has had her hand up for some time. Elena, do you have a question or a statement at this point?
No, I don't. It's, that's from before. I forgot to take it down, sorry.
Not a problem, okay. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha, thank you for your report. You mentioned two things that I think are of concern and interest. You went over much of what was in the Finance Department's report about parsing out these definitions, and I think that what you highlight is that this bill is not about actually just creating clarification or furthering the definition, you know, further clarifying the definition of what dispose means, but as you described it, it is essentially about a fundamentally, a fundamental rethinking of the whole purpose of this section of code. What we're talking about, what you described, is a disposal fee that, a surcharge that is paid by the person who is disposing of their waste, wherever that may be, wherever it may be finally destined. And what this bill does is essentially redefine this as not being a surcharge that is really to be considered by the person, but so much as the business or place, I mean, that's what's really defining this, right? I mean, it's... Am I incorrect here?
Yeah, I think, I found it interesting in going back and looking at the origins of this particular portion of the code, the surcharge portion of Santation Section is Article 23, is a little confusing because there's a number of areas, some of which were in effect, some weren't in effect, but would be in effect if certain things happened in Baltimore County. So it has tended to be a rather confusing section to me over the years. However, I think that what I found interesting was that really the intent of the surcharge was to start making commercial entities think about what they're doing with their trash and were there options other than just dumping it somewhere, i.e. the city, or transferring it or doing some sort of waste adjustment and then taking it off somewhere else. So there really was a recycling slash diversion process that was going on back in 1991, and we obviously want to be, we, the city of Baltimore, want to be heading in that direction, and we still need to see our commercial partners doing the same. I think there's a different mindset today than in 1991, so I think, and I think there are other economic reasons why some folks would be, and the commercial sector would be interested in doing things other than just dumping. So I just found it a very interesting exercise to go through this.
And it's, I think, in your comments, you also noted, or kind of in passing, that this is not just something that applies to commercial entities in Baltimore City, but rather, I mean, any business, anywhere in Carroll County, in Baltimore County, in Anarundel or Howard County, could be hauling their waste into Baltimore City in order to dispose of it at this facility, or this facility could be collecting from those counties and bringing it into their facility for transfer here in Baltimore City. And so there's an impact here in Baltimore City that can be felt from even surrounding jurisdictions. I would say that, to your point about the fee correlating to people's motivation to find other ways of disposing of things, really fits with the zero-waste emphasis that the city has taken on in the last couple of years, where the real thrust of zero waste is even bigger than how we dispose of the things, how we reuse or recycle things, but actually waste reduction as, you know, waste stream reduction and elimination. And I find it really hard to believe that by making it cheaper for people to dispose of waste, we're not doing harm to our efforts to motivate them to stop producing waste in the first place. That this surcharge really does have the potential to be impactful in making people more conscientious about whether or not they're going to produce waste in the first place.
And I want to, Councilman Dorsey, I thank you for bringing that issue to the front. And again, Marsha, I thank you for your responses and giving us a little more of the historical context. Anything else from D.P.W. before we go on to some of the public testimony? I know there's some affected individuals who also want to share.
I'll just make it very quick, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, everyone, for their questions. And, Councilman Dorsey, I think that one of the other things we've got going for ourselves right now is that companies are looking internal to their operations and seeing what the actual cost is for generating waste, that there is an economic impact on companies, and I'm hoping that that will also be an additional motivator for commercial enterprises. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you so much. And as I alluded to a second ago, again, we have members of the public who also want to testify. I do see one hand up from an attendee, that's Frank Boston. Would you like to speak at this point?
Yeah, it's like you're on muted.
It looks like he's on, he's trying to, he can't unmute.
Now you gotta hit the camera button if you want to be seen.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Can you see me?
I can't see, but we can hear you. We like that.
Hello?
You can go right ahead, we hear you.
We asked the committee to support this bill. The... You gotta take that, turn that phone off.
Oh, okay.
And Mr. Boston, if you could start from the top. We just started hearing you a second ago, so if you can repeat what you said and start from there. Now we don't hear you. All right, hold on for one second, please. All right, see if you can talk to us now.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Perfect. Great.
All right, cool. Yep. All right. Again, I'm Frank Boston III. I'm an attorney, representing Republic Waste Corporations. Also is going to testify with me is the plant manager, John Blevins. We'd like to thank the Councilman Risinger and Councilman Costello for sponsoring the bill and all of the other cosponsors who have signed on as cosponsors. You know, I've heard a lot of the committee reports, and thank you for that. What this bill simply says is it clarifies that any waste which has a final destination outside of Baltimore City should not be subject to the surcharge. You know, this is an incentive to keep waste out of our landfills and incinerators that are here in the city. The idea of moving it out of the city is the first step, I, we believe, and to eliminate some of the waste that would remain, obviously, within our boundaries. You know, one of the points that needs to be made is that the Maryland Department of the Environment and all other counties follow this same reasoning. For example, if you go to COMAR, Section 26.04.07.02, subsection nine, it defines final disposal means the complete and ultimate disposal of solid waste. And the intent of the original legislation was to say that any waste that was in Baltimore City at its final destination would thus be subject to the surcharge. You know, the actual practice here is, you know, the four, you take an example of, let's say, four smaller dunk trucks, and I know that's an oxymoron, but let's just say four trucks that pick up waste from a hospital. Maybe a hospital's not a good example, from a school, from a hotel, from a business. And then they take it and they, to the transfer station, which then, for economies of scale and even less pollution, gets transferred to a larger tractor trailer and taken out of the state. That simple act of transferring it to the larger tractor trailer, we feel should not be subject to the tax. And the reason is the final destination is not here in the city. It is being, as the incentive of the legislation was and should be, taken out of the city. You know, the bill goes back to 1991 and all, from 1991 until 2014, effectively 2019, Mr. Blevins will explain it. You know, Republic was not paying the tax and didn't believe they were subject to it. However, when there was a determination and it wasn't clear as to whether the law applied to them, Republic did start collecting because they wanted to be, you know, they didn't want it to be in violation of the city interpretation. And they did pay the, in 1999, they did pay the transfer fee, which led to the clarification of this bill. We asked the committee for a favorable report. And, you know, we, I think I speak for Republic. When it, when there will be a larger conversation sometime in the future about the complete elimination of waste, you know, the modern-day recycling of waste, you know, Republic would like to be a part of that conversation. And we'd like to be participants as we want to be good corporate citizens. But this bill is just a simple clarification fix of, you know, different interpretations of a law that was on the books. And again, I reiterate that we feel that the, it's a good thing that the waste is being removed from the city and therefore the incentive of not having to pay this transfer of the waste that's going to be removed should apply. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Blevins.
Mr. Who?
John Blevins. He's the plant manager of Republic.
Just a second. I'll get him on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, you should be on.
Okay, Mr. Blevins, can we be able to join us? Yeah, mute them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask another question of the Finance Department?
Try to make it real quick before we get into further testimony, but yes.
Thank you. Pedro, do you have a, an assessment of how much of this surcharge that is paid to the city comes from Republic versus, comes through Republic versus Wheelabrader versus the city facilities?
Councilman Dorsey, yes, we have, they, they report to the city how much they collect. Remember that they are not the payers of the tax, they are the collectors. But in order to identify what the impact specifically for this legislation will be, we need to understand where they finally dispose this solid waste. And that information, we don't handle it. That is provided by the state. So we need to get all that information is to see where these facilities actually dispose the trash. But we know how much they collect through haulers that is, are using their facilities.
But by saying that we are gonna, the fiscal impact of this is $150,000. That's what we project would otherwise be coming to the city through Republic, who is essentially the only business that would be...
Actually, it's not Republic. The one that we know is not disposing solid waste in the city. It's a different company that gets the trash from haulers and then have, we don't know the detail, but the portion of that solid waste goes outside the city. That $150,000 is what we estimate it's gonna, we are not going to receive because they will continue their normal operation disposing outside.
And what is the total amount that we collect from this surcharge from all sources?
It's about 2.5, 2.6 million dollars per year.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, thank you for that question. Thank you for the answer. So now on to John Blevins.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I appreciate you all listening and giving me the opportunity to speak. As been mentioned earlier, we opened a transfer station in Curtis Bay in 1996. And from 1996 to 2014, we never paid the surcharge because we had an opinion that didn't apply to us because it was talking about disposal. And we weren't disposing of the trash within the city limits. We were taking it to our landfill in Virginia. So we have never paid it. In 2014, the Law Department approached us and asked why we weren't paying it. Because of the tax that we were going to have to start charging and because of a contract, we have a third-party transfer station, we decided to shut the transfer station down. And so 2014, we shut it down. And in 2019, we reopened it because the contract we had with the third-party transfer station was over with, and it made more sense for us to reopen it. So 2019, in April, we reopened our transfer station. We started paying the tax to the city because of the civil penalties associated with the legislation. So we didn't feel it was wise not to pay it. So we've been paying it since April of last year. And because we couldn't get the Law Department to agree with us on the interpretation of disposal, we took the next step to try to get this resolved by going to Councilman Risinger, who the transfer station is within his district. And the company, the main part of our company in Baltimore is at 260 West Dickman Street, which is also in Councilman Costello's district. So we approached both councilmen to see if they could sponsor the bill for us to try to clarify what disposal is and eliminate the 750 surcharge. It's our, it's our belief that disposal is the final destination of trash. So when we run it through the transfer station, put it on the floor, load it into bigger tractor trailers and run it to Virginia or Pennsylvania, that we aren't disposing of it within the city. We are only transferring it. It's only temporarily being in the city. And then we run it to our landfills in Virginia or Pennsylvania. So we shouldn't be, shouldn't be paying the surcharge or collecting it from the haulers. So that's kind of the crux of why we asked for this bill to be presented. And we feel it would also help, you know, originally, we felt that the legislation was designed not only to help promote recycling, but also to keep solid waste out of the city landfill, which would fill it up sooner and create the problem of having to get an expansion or relocate or develop a new one. So we felt by taking it out of state, we were helping the city avoid that situation. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't feel like it applied to us because we're not disposing of the solid waste within the city. We're merely putting it in tractor trailers and running it to our landfills in Virginia, Pennsylvania.
Thank you. I knew there'd be a question from the committee. I'll go with Councilman Dorsey first.
It's, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to note that the commentary from Mr. Blevins really underscores the mentality of this bill here, that it's all about the business doing the disposal and not about the motivations of the hauler and the actual people. And that this is really creating, reducing costs for the, for them as a transfer station and as a business that hauls, you know, out of state rather than the people who are, and the businesses that are actually producing and hauling the waste. It is really removing people from the consciousness of the decision about waste production. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And are there any additional questions, members of the committee? Any agencies have any additional input?
Mr. Chairman, we also, from the lawyer's office, we have Ms. Berg. I don't know if she wants to testify. Emily Berg.
Is there anyone else who's, who'd like to testify as well? Please raise your hand if you, if you can. Looks like Aleah Hendricks.
Okay, well, we can go through, we can go through the public and unmute them.
Okay.
Hello?
Jana Gova.
Yeah, I heard her for a second. All right, again.
Steve Anderson.
Good afternoon. I see a hand up from Aleah Hendricks.
Yes, good evening, Chairman. I'm Aleah Hendricks, the legislative representative from DGS. I just wanted to mention us earlier when DPW was talking. But we are still of the mind that we would defer to law and finance so we don't have the other additional testimony.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard from all the agencies. Again, thanks for chiming in as well. Is there anyone from the public who would...
I have to unmute them.
Okay.
The callers, Rebecca.
We're gonna go down the list.
Okay, now we can go to callers. Caller, caller uses number three. Okay, you should hear beep. And you can speak. Okay, Carol Hacker. Caller number four. When you hear two beeps, you should, you can start speaking. Caller uses number five. Number seven. I think that's everybody, Mr. Chair. Richard Tabby two. That looks like if anybody wants to speak, then hit the button to raise your hand.
All right, have we missed anyone else, anyone from the public, anyone from any agencies, representatives, or members of the council who would like to add additional commentary?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, thank you. We have heard from Public Works that the intention of this fee, whether or not it's applied to businesses disposing of waste in Baltimore City or elsewhere, the intention exists that this surcharge should exist in order to motivate people and businesses to engage in other waste practices other than pure disposal of waste. And I would say with that, entertain more consciousness about waste reduction. We've also heard that, that the fiscal impact of the surcharge as it exists is the amount of about $2.5 million into the city's coffers each year. And as I pointed out, this fee has not been updated in, since, since it was created in 1991. And so it has not been updated to adjust for inflation.
Mr. Chair, it looks like everybody just got unmuted.
I didn't do that.
Okay, I think...
Okay, I think everybody's back muted. Okay.
And so, Mr. Chair, considering how rarely this law gets addressed and that I think that we should seize opportunities when they arise, I would like to make a motion here to amend this bill to, in... a motion here to amend this bill, um, to, uh, in section 112B1, which is the section on rate on line 15 of page four of the bill, line 15, strike the number 750 and replace In order to adjust the fee rate, or rather the surcharge rate for inflation based on the 1991 to 2020 difference.
I wouldn't say question. Yeah, Councilman Henry.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Finance if that would, um, meet the Councilman Dorsey's, uh, expectations in terms of how much would that, uh, increase, uh, both the city's revenues and how quickly could you get the committee a breakdown of based on who's paying what now, who would be paying that increase?
Uh, may I, may I talk?
Yes, please.
Sure. So yes, uh, Councilman Henry, yes, uh, we could, uh, calculate the fiscal impact with this proposed increase in the surcharge. Um, I, I wouldn't be a problem. Remember that the only issue that for this calculation is that with information that we know, it's only one facility that is currently disposing the solid waste outside the city. We don't have that information. It's not reported to us where the final destination is. So it's going to be based on the assumption that only that facility continued disposing outside. Other facilities will continue their normal operational procedure and that increase will eventually offset the loss in revenue for, for the, the proposed change in the, in the language.
Oh, okay.
And also I just want to reiterate, uh, Councilman Henry and to all, uh, council members, um, the, the fees paid by the haulers to the facilities, facilities, all the collectors, the haulers don't know where that trash is going to. So we have to come with a mechanism to identify where that trash is going to be disposed and eventually pay back or give an exemption to the haulers who are trying to know where that final destination is going to be. Um, so just want to, um, clarify that, too.
Okay, my, my apologies then. I may have led one of my colleagues on. I was confusing this surcharge with the tipping fee and in terms of, um, who would be paying which parts of it. Okay, I, I have a better, I think I have a better understanding now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
For clarification.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Um, for clarification from Finance, um, you're, what you're saying is that if this fee goes up, then maybe more facilities would, more people would send their, their, their waste outside of the city and perhaps the revenues to the city would not increase as much as is correlated to the rate increase? Is that what you're saying?
No, really quickly, Pedro, I want you to respond. What I heard was only one facility, so the impact wouldn't be as much, we're thinking. But Pedro, could you jump in there?
My understanding is that he's saying that only one facility at present is disposing of their waste outside of the city and that at present we're generating, and since that facility, that facility is not paying us anyway, right? They have been refusing to pay us, right?
No, so, 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 sorry.
That, that's incorrect.
Maybe we should let Pedro tell us what he means.
Yeah, please. Please, please, please give us a full explanation so we're all clear what you're, what you're saying.
So no, that, that, uh, Councilman, that's incorrect. The facility that is, uh, currently based on the, uh, disposing solid waste outside the city is being paid the surcharge for many years. Um, um, we know that they are disposing out, out, outside the city because they report that to the state. It's a requirement by, by the state. Um, so if this, the, the normal operation continues as it is and we increase the solid waste surcharge, that facility, what they will do is just not collect the surcharge from the haulers who are bringing the trash to their facility because that trash is going somewhere else. It's not, remember that the facilities are not the payers, they are the collectors of the tax.
But, okay, but for the facilities that are a final place of disposal in Baltimore City, they are collecting and remitting to us $2.5 million, only 150,000 of which is from this one facility that is taking their stuff outside of the city, right? Okay, so if this bill were to be amended with the increased fee, then, and passed, then that facility which is no longer, that facility which is taking its waste outside of the city, we would lose their 150,000 that they're remitting to the city. But for the others with the increased fee, there would still be 2.35 million plus the increase of the fee, which is almost double. So it would bring a, an additional 2.3 million into the city's coffers because of this, with this increase for those other facilities.
Sure. What this bill is going to do is create incentive to bring that solid waste, more facilities to bring that solid waste outside the city. So it's not going to be a.
And if we think that that is.
Hold up a second. Pedro, I just want to hear what you're saying. Yeah. Pedro, please.
What I was saying, uh, that this not one-to-one relationship, meaning that by increasing the fee, yes, we might generate more revenue, almost doubling the revenue because we're losing only 5% as standard, uh, business operation works. But while we are creating this incentive for more facilities to move that trash outside the city, so less, uh, solid waste is going to our local landfill.
And so, Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
So for clarification, this is exactly what I believe to be the case, that if we believe that city revenues have value to us and if we believe, as is the intent of this bill, that it is better for waste to be disposed of outside of Baltimore City than inside of this city, we could project, as Pedro, I think, just helped illuminate, that increasing this fee and passing the bill, uh, with the rest of, of the provisions as drafted would result in perhaps $2.3 million more coming into the city's coffers. And if any less than that, the lessened amount would be a result of more trash going out of the city, which we presume to be a good thing. And that is why I have this motion on the floor to increase the fee to $14.25 to adjust it for inflation from 1991 to present.
So before you go, go on, and again, I, I, I want to hear from other members of the committee and other affected parties. Well, one of the things I will say is I'd be, I'd be more comfortable, um, getting a report from Finance around what the specifics would be in terms of not only, uh, a specific dollar amount, but also what the ramification would be. So if that were the case, if the motion does get a second, I would rather have some additional conversation about that, but I do want to at least try the opportunity for folks to weigh in.
Hey, Mr. Chair, uh, Councilman Burnett.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I, I think what he's proposing is interesting before move, move, do we need to move it first to get more information from Finance? Is that where you're?
I, I guess, and here's, here's part of the challenge. So, so what I'm thinking is we might have to fold it open so that we can then have, uh, to, to adjourn, essentially to, to adjourn the hearing, then have Finance come back with some more information.
I see, I would, I would prefer that if possible. Uh, that'd be my position, but.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Burnett. I see both Councilman Henry and Councilman Costello. I'll go to the Councilman Costello as the sponsor of the bill than the Councilman Henry as a community member. Councilman Costello.
Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I defer to my colleague first.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Or so, Henry, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I, I was just going to ask, um, whether it might be cleaner in a lot of ways to just send, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I feel bad holding up this bill that does this thing to get more information about potentially another good thing when we could just do the other good thing separately.
Imagine like a second reader thinking?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm thinking we could just put in legislation to raise the fee.
As a separate piece.
As a separate piece.
I see.
If, if, if legislative reference and the president's office would work with us, um, you know, we could put that in next week. So then the reason I'm saying this, the reason I'm saying this is I'm concerned about the pushback from dramatically increasing this fee, which was not what people thought this bill was about. And there may be other people who would want to be part of this conversation, um, both in support or in opposition, if they knew that it would have a broader impact.
So, so first I'll say, uh, Councilman Henry, thank you so much for your sage advice and wisdom. I think that is a, that, that's a, a fair way to look at it. Um, again, I think you make a good point in that folks were not necessarily coming and thinking this was the case, but I do also sympathetic to what Councilman Dorsey is saying. So I think that makes sense in terms of looking at this as a separate piece of legislation, um, to move forward to do a potentially other good thing. So, uh, is there any other comment on this piece? Yes, uh, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, one wanted to, the second, what Councilman Henry stole my thunder on one of my two points. I had a feeling we were on the same page. Um, it, it is a material difference to, to the legislation. Um, what the legislation proposes, uh, is to essentially waive this fee, uh, for individuals who are bringing their trash to a final resting place outside of the city, Baltimore versus double the fee. The second thing I would note, and I would ask Marcia Collins, uh, from, uh, DPW as well as Pedro from Finance to chime in here, is that there are other fees associated with these activities, specifically tipping fees. And my understanding is that, uh, administration and whether or not that gets done this term or not, this is something that Finance has, has been interested in, is doing a comprehensive review of all of those fees that are not established in legislation, but rather are determined by the Board of Estimates. And the tipping fee is a major piece of, of this discussion. And I think, and while I appreciate where Councilman Dorsey is coming from in terms of, um, looking at what the fee would be today, uh, if adjusted for inflation, um, I, I would argue that that could somewhat be arbitrary when not taken in the context of the larger situation here, uh, in terms of other fees associated with this and not giving Finance the opportunity to do a more comprehensive, uh, review of this. And Mr. Chair, if it's okay, uh, I, I would ask if Marcia or Pedro could, could comment on, on the comment I just made.
Absolutely. Would either of you like to weigh in? I think that's a fair point.
Mr. Chairman, this is Marcia Collins again for DPW. Um, certainly tipping fees are, uh, and these are the fees that someone would pay, say if they show up at our Quarantine Road landfill and deposit material there, they would pay a per ton tipping fee, mean by tipping fee. And similarly, the, um, current Bresco facility has a tipping fee for, uh, companies who bring their vehicles there to dispose as well. Um, we are looking at tipping fees. There's several ways to look at it. One is you want to be in general competitive with your neighboring, uh, nearby landfills, uh, since you don't want to become so inexpensive that you're attracting a lot of business. Uh, and two, you, you look at capacity of landfills, um, in light of, uh, the fact that we are needing to expand our landfill, uh, which we knew for years we would have to do. One of the ways you protect the capacity that you have is to adjust your tipping fees so that you're not as attractive to, uh, companies that wish to bring their material there. Uh, so there's a lot of different reasons why you make these adjustments and, uh, there's different timings and different reasons why you would do so. But it's definitely a part of what we look at on a continuing basis, and I'm sure Finance has similar concerns. We, we approach it more from a, uh, operational, um, and is it more important for us to save capacity of our landfill for our own needs? Or does it make sense to get some revenue, um, to help support what we do?
Thank, thank you for that. And then, uh, I see, um, Vice Chair Schleifer has a comment, and I know we also asked to hear from Finance, so Vice Chair Schleifer and then Finance.
Yeah, I just want to echo, uh, what Councilman Henry and Councilman Costello said. You know, I, I hear where Councilman Dorsey is coming from, uh, but certainly is a complete, uh, completely different, uh, require, like legislation to go down that road. Um, and there certainly would be a whole lot greater interest in that considering that an increase like Councilman Dorsey's proposing would add an additional 12% on short term to everybody who has their trash collected in the city and also disposed of in the city. And so therefore it means while we already have our businesses, uh, struggling and we have our nonprofits with their donations that are definitely going to be taking a hit, to add on another 12% to their, you know, their trash collection costs, um, certainly requires a lot greater discussion. So I, I'm also in support of, you know, having that as a completely separate, uh, conversation to what we're discussing today.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schleifer. Uh, Finance, did you have any additional points that you wanted to bring into play? Doesn't look like that. And then.
I have a question.
Is that, uh, Councilwoman Schnee?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Schnee, please.
Can Finance tell us, um, is there a way where we can catch generally all of the fees that we pay for the city that has not been updated so they can like be updated as we like move on? I forgot what the actual right term it is, um, that will happen, but inflation, like automatic inflation as we go on, you know, even if we're not in office, you, you know, in a couple of years, but some of the things that need to just be updated and looked at is, is, is there something that Finance can tell us in reference to how we can do that or what items we can look at to see what things have not been updated since the nineties that we, that probably need to, we need to have a look at and then kind of make it automatic to just go up with inflation for something?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Schnee, thank you for adding that. Pedro, are you able to jump in now?
Sure. So I, I think I have to answer two questions. The first one, uh, let me follow up with Marcia. Uh, I believe definitely revenue is, uh, a big component for city finances, but environmental component of this type of policy, I think more important in terms of the landfill capacity. Um, there are some, um, work being done, uh, to, you know, estimate the, the life of the, of the landfill and I, I think a comprehensive analysis just to see if increasing the tipping fee comparison to other jurisdictions and see how competitive we are is something that, um, needs to be done. That was, uh, is being, is being addressed in prior administrations and it was part also the ten-year plan, your financial planning. So I, I am in full agreement with, uh, a comprehensive analysis that we, we might be able to put together. Um, but the environmental component of this decision is, uh, I believe more relevant, uh, more than the financial. Um, now to a, address the question of Councilwoman Schnee's, um, there is a fee policy for the city. Uh, we, uh, many years ago, there was an assessment of all, uh, fees that the city, um, has, and the policy calls for a five-year, uh, evaluation of, of the cost related to those fees being charged and gradual increase, uh, by inflation, adjustment by inflation every five years. That policy hasn't been implemented and we are in the process of, we've been in the process to move forward with that policy. process to move forward with that policy. Um, it's a, it's a very aggressive, uh, program that we need to tackle by agencies and then agencies trying to identify what, what fees are managed by those agencies and then try to, um, make those adjustments based on cost and benchmark analysis. Uh, it's something that cannot happen, uh, automatically. It requires a lot of resources in order to make that as efficient as possible, but we're working on that.
No, thank you, thank you for that clarity. Um, I also, it looks like Frank Boston and John Blevins have hands raised. Um, do you have comments or consensus at this point?
Oh, I, not at this point. Early, I, I did want to respond, but I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any additional questions or comments from any of the panelists, committee members, council members or attendees?
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes, uh, Councilman Dorsey.
I have an amendment motion on the floor.
I haven't heard a second yet.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll second it for the purposes of conversation, uh, if we, if there's, if there's still any discussion for it. Um, but, um, I, 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 I'm, I'm concerned that if we just do this now, that what we're going to do is we're going to create a completely new set of policy concerns around this bill that then we will have to deal with during this week between now and when this bill comes out for second reader. Um, and I would rather just try to deal with those issues separately. Um, and, uh, if we can't deal with them separately, we can always do this on the floor on Monday night if it acts, if it has to be done as part of this bill because for some reason it can't be done separately, I think that would be a better way of doing it.
All right, so it's been moved in second.
I got discussion.
Roll call on the motion then.
You, you see, Council, uh, Vice Chair Schleifer.
Yeah, since, uh, since it has a second and now we have some discussion going, I think it's important to also note that, you know, it's more complex than just the time value of money for what, you know, the cost was back then to what, you know, the cost would be in a standard, you know, factor in just the time value. You also have to look at the big picture and the, and the climate in Baltimore City back then when that was started versus now. And, um, you know, the economy in Baltimore City back then was a lot stronger than it was now. The population was a lot higher. Um, and so, you know, all things considered, um, it's, it's tougher now to do business in Baltimore City than it was back then. Uh, you have a lot less customers to, to sell to and everything else. So I don't think it's a, it's a simple, um, you know, dollar equation to be able to just say, hey, let's, let's double it, um, based on just that time lapse because, you know, things are not, you know, you know, there's a, there's a supply and demand function that you have to look at when, you know, and placing numbers on these things. I mean, you can't, you can't look at this across the board that the first time there was a property tax or the first time there's an income tax, if you did everything exactly at the rate of inflation, Baltimore City would be bankrupt right now. And so I think we just have to tread lightly and have a greater discussion about what is the right amount that that fee should be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Yeah, I think, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, look, I, if this bill were passed with this amendment, anybody who's doing hauling and wants to avoid this fee altogether can do so by taking their waste to a facility that doesn't have, uh, an endpoint of an incinerator or landfill in Baltimore City, they can take it to a transfer point in Baltimore City that takes their waste outside of the city. This, um, means that, that nobody who's doing business in Baltimore City has to bear any greater hardship whatsoever for, uh, the cost of doing that business. And I would say that it furthers the, it, it, it's clear, it's clear that the intention of this bill is to reward businesses for taking their trash out, to outside of Baltimore City, and it helps further that goal. And, um, uh, I, I can't, I, I can't, I can't understand, I can't justify why we shouldn't be updating costs with the, uh, with the cost of, of doing business, which is exactly what the consumer price index is.
All right, and I know, um, Councilwoman Snead, um, has a point.
I, I just, I'm, Councilman Dorsey, not that I don't agree with you, I just think I agree with, um, Councilman Henry's idea about having a deeper conversation about this, um, at another time. So I was just going to say, well, can't we just withdraw the, um, the motion and, you know, and then just, you know, put in a whole nother bill for later where we can go farther and have all the facts around everything is what I would like preferred to see it do. I know, I understand everybody, it's like hard times right now, but I just want to see what the numbers will be and the impact, like, just to have a little bit more information because I, of course, we all want more revenue for the city, but I just want to be, I just want all the information.
Understood. I see, I, I see, um, Vice Chair Schleifer, um, Frank Boston is trying to get in, so Vice Chair Schleifer and then, uh, Boston.
Yeah, look, I agree with the environmental impact, but keep in mind Baltimore City, um, you know, is one of the, is one of the number one, or probably is the number one customer of those who are disposing of their trash in the city. So I think if we want to lead by example, that would be a noble cause to require the city, um, to first have to get rid of all the city's trash outside of the city, um, before we go and tell everybody else to do as we say, not as we do. And so, you know, if the chairman would entertain, I'd like to make, um, a motion as well to table that motion, um, you know, for.
Table the motion? I'm also open to voting on it. I mean, I think we're all kind of the same mindset. I'm in, I'm in the belief, and I think it seems like the majority of committee is, that it should be an addition, another bill, not necessarily a part of, of this one.
So you want to second that motion?
At this point, I mean, the, the, the motion's already been properly moved to second, so we might as well just vote. So we can do, um, roll call.
On the amendment for $14.25 in line seven, Chairman Bullock.
No.
Chairman Bullock votes no. Vice Chair Schleifer.
No.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes no. Mr. Burnett.
I'd like to claim my vote. I'm not, not in opposition to what's being proposed, um, but would be supportive of a separate bill, so I want to vote no on the amendment.
Uh, Mr. Cohen. And, uh, Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Dorsey votes aye. Mr. Henry.
Uh, Councilman Burnett already explained my vote, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
No.
Okay. Call again for Mr. Cohen. I'm not sure if he's still on.
Well, if Councilman Henry is voting for, uh, if Councilman Burnett can vote for Councilman Henry, can I vote for Councilman Cohen?
No.
He didn't vote for me, he just explained my vote.
But, but, but the point remains that, that I think that most of, it seems like the majority of the committee are pretty much unanimous, just to say, um, support the idea of additional bill. Um, so, so Councilman Dorsey, we do appreciate, um, your thought on this very important issue, uh, but do think it would be a separate bill as opposed to attached to this one.
Mr. Chairman, a five vote, there's one vote, uh, in the affirmative, five votes and a negative, uh, one member absent, uh, the amendment is not agreed to.
Okay, before we go further, I did see that Frank Boston was trying to make a comment. Is this something you wanted to get in before we go further?
No, the vote on the amendment eliminated my need for the comment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Vice Chair Schleifer.
Can I make a motion to, uh, to move the bill?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to move this bill favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Miss Snead.
Uh, we ready for roll call, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Chairman Bullock.
Yes.
Chairman Bullock votes aye. Vice Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett? Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Cohen? Uh, appears to, appears to have left us, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Ah, gotcha. He voted aye.
Okay. Mr. Dorsey.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
To explain my vote, I just want to be clear that I'm not voting against this bill because my amendment didn't pass. I'm voting against this bill because I disagree with the premise of it in principle. No.
Understood, Councilman Dorsey, and thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Dorsey votes no. Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Henry votes aye. Member Snead?
Yes.
Member Snead votes aye. Mr. Chair, six votes in the affirmative, one negative. The bill can go to second reader on Monday if that's desired.
All right, thank, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. You know, that being the last, uh, and only agenda item at this point, uh, we will stand adjourned, but I do want to thank, uh, the committee staff, Richard Crummond, for working with us today. I thank you all for your diligence on this issue and also your patience with some of our technical issues early on. It's been a bit of a longer hearing, and so also appreciate our agency representatives who also, also weighed in, but also the bill sponsors and, and all the panelists and participants who have also weighed in today. So again, I thank you for joining us today and look forward to our continued work in the future. Have a good rest of the day. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned.